All right, we will call tonight's meeting to order for Tuesday, February 11, 2020, and start off as we do every meeting by reading the mission statement. "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world." Call please.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Madora Champagne.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cockrum.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Elardi.
Public comment, I think everybody's here for actual presentations. Am I correct on that? Think we're good? All right, so I don't think we actually have any public comments. So moving on to first order of business correspondence, we do have a donation to the school gift fund, and it is in an amount of $350 from the Hockamok Area YMCA for gardening. Mini grant, so a very small garden. So do we have a motion to accept the generous donation from the Hockamok Area YMCA?
So moved?
Headed second?
Second.
Assuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Hockamok Area YMCA.
Thank you.
And then moving on, we have a thank you letter from the Auburn High School. We had donated some IMAX to them. Basically, we weren't able to find a home for them to sell them, so they had need for them, so we were a nice neighbor to the Auburn folks and donated 18 IMAX to them. So they've already been used in helping out supporting students in their academic and co-curricular activities in a number of different ways. For one, for our yearbook publications, music program, television production courses, the IMAX have enhanced their student experiences. On behalf of all of us at Auburn High School, we thank you again and wish you and your school committee the happies. The happies are holiday seasons. I've never quite seen the phrase that way, but I think I like that. And that was from our new friend, Casey Hanfield, and the Auburn principal. And I want us to use the happies of the holiday seasons going forward, so remember that for next year.
I've got the happies.
Okay, very good. That is it for me. We'll now move on to Ingrid.
We have the Special Ed Parent Advisory Council here tonight. They are going to present the committee with an update on some of the work that they have done. They have done a significant amount of programming and planning to bring presentations in for parents. They publish a regular monthly newsletter to let people know about what's going on in the community and connect people to additional resources. So I would like to introduce the, I'm not sure who's presenting tonight, but the, all right, so it's joint, you all have to come up to the microphone so they can hear you for cable, so. Thank you for coming. And do you want to start by just kind of sharing your name and your role in the CPAC?
Sure. So my name is Thais Bingham Hickman. I'm one of the co-chairs of our CPAC here, and I've been on the board now for the last two years.
Joanne Gilbody, also one of the co-chairs with Ty.
Karen Murphy, parents of a fifth grader and a preschooler, and chair of communications, I guess.
Kayla Costa, I'm the secretary, and I just joined this ladies about eight months ago. Ladies and we have gentlemen as well. I don't want to leave them.
We do have two other board members who couldn't be here tonight with sick kids. Karen Mazzola is our director of finance, and Mike McCarthy is our director of events. So we have a full board, and we've worked really hard to kind of work together and find a good team that's committed, so we're really excited to share what we've been up to.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we'd just like to share what we've been working on primarily this year and some of our goals for upcoming events. This is the first time, at least since I've been on the board, that we're presenting to school committees, so we're really trying to, you know, become more engaged, and you may have seen us at some of your previous meetings. I think the CPAC in general for Norfolk has been around for seven years now, and so, you know, when I joined, we really tried to build up the board. Joanne was already on the board, and I think that now that we have a full board, we've really been able to do a lot in the community. So thank you for having us today. So just for those of you that may or may not know, we just want to give you kind of a high-level overview of what exactly a PAC is or a parent advisory council. So this is actually something that is mandated by Massachusetts law.
Do you have the Uber app?
I don't think I have Wi-Fi connected here.
Sorry about that. If this continues to give me problems, there is a handout in our, in the exhibit, so hopefully.
It was down in the Chrome.
There you go. Okay, so just a high-level overview. One of the functions of a PAC is to work with the school committee, obviously, to establish a parent advisory council, which we have in this town of Norfolk. Membership shall be offered to those with children with disabilities and other interested parties, so we are open to whoever would like to join us, although for the board, we do ask that parents have a child who's enrolled in the special education department. What we primarily are supposed to be doing is basically advising the school committee on matters that pertain to special education in our community, meeting regularly with school officials to participate in planning and development, and also establishing bylaws and other operational procedures, and holding meetings that are open to the public, which we do. We have a meeting once a month that is open to the general public, so anyone can come in and find out what we're doing and what we're up to. So that's really what a PAC is supposed to do. Our mission statement is basically in line, in alignment with that, and so our particular mission statement as the Norfolk CPAC is to strive to collaborate with and advise the school committee and administration to improve educational opportunities for children in and outside of the school district. And the reason we say outside is because we do have parent workshops that are open to neighboring towns and really anyone who wants to come and join us. So all of our events, for the most part, are open to the public. We promote improved education and success for children with disabilities, ensuring that they receive equal access to education and opportunities within our schools and community. And we also provide a network for parents of children with disabilities to gain access to local resources, gain support, and share ideas. So we do a lot of workshops, and Joanne will talk a little bit about some of the things that we've been working on. And also, we encourage families to be involved in district and policy discussions. So it's not really our job to kind of bring the parents' concerns to the school, it's the parents' responsibility, but we do offer, you know, our support, and we're helping parents to get in contact with the special education department here in Norfolk. But it's really not our job, nor do we want it to be, to really be advising parents on the policies and things that are, you know, that they are entitled to. So we talked a little bit about who we are. So the CPAC is run by Norfolk parents. It is a volunteer position, so we do a lot, but it is a volunteer-based position. We are a 501(c)(3), so we are registered with the IRS, so we do raise our own funds and manage our own finances. That's a little different from some of the other CPACs where the school is actually managing their funds. We actually raise our own and we manage them, and that is part of, it's one of the guidelines that's been posted as, by the Massachusetts Department of Education, that if you do register as a 501(c)(3), you can manage your own finances, so we do that. We offer educational presentations, resources, and information on the IEP process, and opportunities for parents, as we mentioned, to connect in a supportive environment. And one of the things actually that we're running right now is a parent training series on social and emotional support, which again, Joanne will talk about. So that's kind of who we are and what we do. We've already introduced ourselves. We do actually have two other board members that we didn't mention. We have a parent outreach coordinator, Stephanie Durney, and really, that position is meant to engage with other organizations with the community, within the community, like the Lions, like the PTO, et cetera, and try and work with them on various activities and events. And also, we have a special advisor who's really there for just consultation.
I did want to mention, Ty mentioned that we meet monthly. It's open to the public, and that's the first Tuesday of every month at 7:00 at the library. We'd be happy to have any of you join us anytime you'd like to see what we're up to.
HOD library.
No, sorry, at the public library.
Oh.
The Norfolk Public Library, in the community room. So last year, the board set some really ambitious goals, and this is just sort of a highlight of some of the big things that we were able to achieve. I should say they, because I join them later in the year, but, so they completely revamped the website, it's much more user-friendly, it's nicer to look at. The newsletter also now goes out via email, and it's a link, and it goes right to the website where you can view the newsletter. And that's a monthly newsletter, and has all of our upcoming events, it has usually a special spotlight, sometimes on a teacher or a member of the special education department. We try to highlight different books that we think people might like, that are relevant to special education. Some other things that we worked on this last year, really wanted to expand the kind of events that we were holding and increase participation by parents in those events and children, because we hold, on the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about the events and the workshops that we have. And we, I think we really did a good job at expanding our social media platforms this last year, much more of a presence on Facebook and Instagram and, you know, all those things that everybody's looking at on a day-to-day basis a million times on their phone. Pushing out email blasts to people that we get on our email list, so that we're really letting everyone know what we're doing, what's going on, come to this event, here's a workshop that we're having, it's this date, click here, really giving people all the access that we can give them right at their fingertips to come and join us and be a part of the... Oh, no. Go ahead. I know, everyone likes looking at London. I mean, London is pretty cute. We'll just go back one, there we go. So again, a lot of new programs, another thing, exploring additional grant opportunities and other mechanisms of funding, different fundraisers that we can hold, the more money we raise, the more workshops that we can offer to parents for free in our community, and the more events that we can hold for the children in our community at a low cost or at no cost. NCL grant, developing a relationship with the Norfolk Lions, and then we're always looking into state and federal grants that we can apply for and access to raise additional funds. So this is an overview of some of the past workshops for parents, and I'd say the last 18 months, is that fair? So I just want to highlight a few of them, and you can see there's some really amazing titles on here. The Understanding Executive Functioning Workshop was attended by over 200 parents, and it also resulted in a, the purchase of a new executive functioning curriculum for Freeman Kennedy. So that was a pretty amazing outcome. You can see all of these are presented either by staff at the HOD and specialists in their various fields. We really try to vary the workshops. We're always asking parents what they are interested in, so we're catering to what they're looking for, and try to always have something a little different, and not, haven't really repeated a lot of things yet, eventually that will happen, but we're still looking for new and great things to offer to people. And none of that would be possible without the events and fundraisers that we have. One of our biggest and, I think, most fun fundraiser that we have is the trunk or treat at HOD. This past year was amazing. We had over 120 families, that's not individuals, that's families, so you figure two to four individuals in each family, participate this year. It was a really great success, so fun, it's such a fun night, the kids love it. I think we secretly love it. Something new that was this past October, we wanted to include the Freeman Kennedy School. We actually asked the fourth graders to join us at the, right? Yes, sorry, third. We asked the third graders at Freeman Kennedy to join us at the trunk or treat at HOD this year, and for the other kids at Freeman Kennedy, we had our first annual Great Pumpkin stroll. So they were carving pumpkins and watching Great Pumpkin Charlie Brown, and it was a really fun night. Another one I want to highlight is our food truck event, in conjunction with the summer concert series that the Norfolk Rec Department puts on. Another great success last year, and we're looking forward to making it even bigger and more successful this year. It's such a fun night for the town and community. People are dancing and having a good time, and getting food from the food trucks, and all the kids are running around. It's just, it's a really good, it's a really great event. Some of the events we have are not necessarily fundraisers, they're actually, we have a parent social where we try to get parents together to just talk and socialize, and if they need, you know, a shoulder to lean on, sometimes it's always nice. And we also do stuff like kindergarten playground night, which is not a fundraiser, we don't charge anything for that, it's just the incoming kindergarten gardeners get together and get to meet each other. And I could go on for, I feel like, ever on these things, because we're really proud of them, and they've done really well this past year. And that's it? That's it for me, thanks.
So we've worked really hard, as Ty and Kayla have both said, to really connect with the community this year. Last year, we kind of were getting our feet underneath us and trying to figure out what we wanted to focus on, and this year, we spent a whole day almost in April kind of honing in on what our goals were and what our mission statement was, and how we could make sure what we were doing aligned with that mission. So one of the things that we really wanted to focus on is to make sure that the community was aware of us and that they could, you know, access our resources. Kayla did a nice overview of our newsletter. I have a couple photos of it on the next slide, which I can show you, but that does go out to the full district now. So not only are you, as a parent in Norfolk, who's getting special education services, able to get access to the materials and the information that we're sharing, but now the whole district does. And there are certain things that are not necessarily special education qualifiers, right, but still, parents might be interested in finding resources for their children that they might be, you know, heading in that direction, or just want to get an understanding of how to help their child who has anxiety. That's something that is really, one of the biggest things that parents continually ask for is, how do I support my child with anxiety? And so we have an upcoming event in March with that, with that topic, so we're excited about that. As they said, we meet at the library on the first Tuesday. We don't ever have much company, so if you'd like to come, anyone who'd like to come, we'd love to have you join us. There, we spend a lot of time going through our planning and deciding kind of action items for the month ahead. We are really looking forward to our partnerships that we are building now. The NCL and the Lions are two that have volunteered their time and funds to support us, and we're really excited, because that's only going to broaden what we can bring to the community for workshops and for different events that we're doing. Oh, no. And this is just a photo, two photos of our most recent newsletters. What we like to do is kind of highlight what we've done. It's all web-based, so you can just scroll on your phone, we always make sure the formatting, I test it before we finalize it, so you can scroll and see it. The top picture up there, just to highlight, is our teacher pumpkin competition that we had at the Great Pumpkin Stroll. So we had teachers carve pumpkins, and some of them were, all of them were amazing, but they were just really fun, it was a really great opportunity for the teachers.
I think our winner is actually in the audience.
And so, you know, if you'd like to, if you're not on the distribution list and you'd like to see our newsletter, please feel free to reach out to us and let us know.
Hello, I'm wrapping it up, so you'll be happy. Oh, wait, I thought you were doing it, but I'll do it as well. Okay. So our upcoming, the big feature workshops that we are currently in the middle of working on and promoting is, currently, we're doing the Social Skills Parent Training Workshop that was alluded to earlier. We have a local neurologist who runs various friendship groups for kids with a lot of different issues, and we hired her to come and present to local families how they can help at home. So what we're, and we worked with the special ed department to make sure that it worked with our curriculum as well, and so we're teaching parents a little bit of what's being taught at school, so that kids are getting it from all angles, and really kind of supplementing what's happening at school with making sure that's happening at home as well. And that's a big part of what we're trying to do, is to make sure that, you know, special ed kids are, I shouldn't say that's special ed kids, but kids that have needs are getting those addressed, both at school and at home. And then, again, Joanne mentioned it, our big one coming up at the end of March, again, we worked with Dr. Tupper to identify a person who recently came, I think, and she spoke with the school staff about how to handle kids with a lot of anxiety in school, and so we've hired her to come and talk to parents using the same terminology, so that parents can identify it and work with their kids at home as well with their anxiety.
I just want to mention that the social skills training is a nine-hour training for parents, which has been a wonderful opportunity, that you also collaborated with the other elementary districts in order to offer that training to families in the region.
We did, yes. We reached out to Plainville and Rentham and King Philip as well, and so we're trying to make sure that, you know, we're supporting as many people as we can, and we do appreciate that some towns don't maybe have as robust a CPAC as we do, and we want to make sure we get, we offer help to everyone. So future milestones and objectives, again, we're working with the special education department to create parent-focused informational materials, basically, again, just to help educate parents who are maybe struggling or don't have as much information as they need, again, working with the special education department to do that, and then, again, working with the special education department to, you know, be able to have conversations about what the various needs are, and maybe some feedback on programs and whatnot, and services that are provided, obviously, come and present to you several times a year, just kind of keep you updated on what we've got going on. We're working on establishing a parents' support group for local families, because, again, when you're, it can feel a little bit like you're on an island to be a parent of a kid with needs, and so we want to make sure all of our islands have bridges, and that we can share the information that we all gain, not just for school, but in general, medical needs and whatnot, with all of our fellow parents. Again, always exploring new grant opportunities and working on building stronger partnerships and alliances with our regional CPACs. Again, we really want to make sure that Plainville and Rentham, and even Franklin and Foxborough and all of those local CPACs, you know, are, we're all working together, because they can provide workshops and we can provide workshops, and some of these things are very expensive, and they help with the cost.
And one other thing, I think Karen alluded to it multiple times, but we work very closely with the special education department here at Norfolk. A lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, but sometimes our relationship isn't as great as we have, and so we're very lucky and fortunate to have a special education department that's very supportive of us, and we work together to help parents, so we really appreciate that.
So, and then, just down to some future workshops, speaking of our special ed department, we're doing a reading and literacy special education evening coming up, March 4th. Dr. Tupper is going to present, as well as one of our reading specialists, Mrs. McSweeney here at school, and so that will, is something that we're looking forward to as well. Then we have, of course, the big one, the Managing Your Child's Anxiety, on March 30th, well, welcome to attend. We have currently over 100 people registered for that event, it's over at King Philip Middle School, very excited about that. We're working on a special education anti-bullying workshop. We know that kids that are on an IEP or a 504 or have special needs tend to be a little bit more receptive of the bullying aspect of life than others, so we wanted to make sure we were working to educate parents on those situations. And then we have two, several spring workshops as well, we're doing, we've hired a local music therapist, Ken DeRozario, Mr. Ken, who, he's the music teacher at HOD. He's going to be doing two music therapy sessions for us, these are open to the general public students, one at HOD and one at Freeman, and then he actually is also going to be helping us with an art therapy workshop that we're doing as well, for, we're doing two of them, one for boys, fifth and sixth graders, because we know boys aren't really going to necessarily want to do the same art that girls might tend to gravitate towards in fifth and sixth grade, so we've separated those out by gender, and he's going to be working with those, with us, with those as well. And all of these are free to absolutely everyone involved, we incur the cost, and it's why we do as much fundraising as we do.
And just to add, the music therapy is actually funded by the Cultural Council in Norfolk. That's a grant that we've applied for and received two years in a row now, so we were able to add a separate, a second workshop this year, because they were able to increase our funding, so we're very excited.
Great. I'm curious, who's the presenter for the anxiety?
Nadia Riley. She's been wonderful. I've spoken with her a few times, Anna knows her, so she comes highly recommended.
She's excellent. We brought her in a couple of times for staff and for an evening seminar series, and she's really very skilled. She's written a couple of books on anxiety and, at different stages, for children through development, so she's great, she'll really enjoy her work.
She works for the Children's Hospital.
Yep.
Great.
Yeah, so that's it. So again, we're all over, all over the web, we try to be as accessible as possible, we have an email account, and we welcome all of your feedback and input, and we thank you very much for having us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
As the ladies explained, this is all volunteer-run, and they put a tremendous amount of time into planning, preparing. It takes a lot of effort to not only write the grants, but to plan the workshops, to advertise them. They work very collaboratively with Dr. Tupper, so we really appreciate all of the time and effort you put in, so thank you.
Excellent work, very impressive, so thank you.
You're all to be commended. I mean, I remember last year, you came in and you just recognized some of the faces and started to kind of build it back up again, and what you've done, I mean, finally, Mr. Kavanaugh's pumpkin skills are recognized. But, I mean, it's amazing what you've done in the course of a year. I mean, you'd already done a lot last year when you came in, this is absolutely amazing what you've done, so you're to be commended, so that's fantastic, so kudos.
Just the fundraising you guys do, the events you put on are amazing, like, and then in the background, you're also writing for grants.
I'm feeling a little, I need to step up my game.
You have a good team. Y'all have smart hats.
Keep wearing those. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to jump back up?
Yeah, I'll jump back. Got excited to move ahead to that presentation and forgot that we actually had one other donation we need to vote on. Lowe's in Plainville had donated, in memory of Mrs. Sullivan, a shed to be used in the perimeter of the HOD playground, and basically, it's going to be used to store playground supplies, you know, balls, hula hoops, maybe some gardening stuff, things like that. So we needed a vote to accept that donation from Lowe's, and also a thank you to them for donating, especially in for Mrs. Sullivan's memory, that's very nice to see. So can I get a motion to accept the donation for Lowe's for the shed to HOD?
I'd like a motion to accept the gracious gift from Lowe's of the shed in honor of Mrs. Sullivan.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Assuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, back to you.
Okay, great. Next on the agenda, we have Dr. Tupper here tonight to talk about recommendations for preschool programming for next year and for preschool tuition.
Thanks for having us this evening. What I wanted to do was preview some of the preschool programming changes that we're recommending for next year. There are a couple of highlights that come along with this, and I'd like to just walk through part of the rationale behind preschool programming, highlight the changes, and talk about some of the changes that we're recommending, okay? So typically, our preschool services are mandated through the Department of Education, through special education law in Massachusetts, and so all of our preschool programming is really developed around our special education students. There's an eligibility process that we follow. Students, when they turn three... Students, when they turn three, if there, there's a child find law, if there is a suspected disability, we do go through the eligibility process and then when teams qualify students for special education services, we build programming around those students. So the programming for special education students is mandated and then we invite typically developing students in to participate in the programming. That's not a mandated service for typically developing students, but it is for special education students. So the gist in the crux of our programming is really centers around the needs of our special education students. So when we look, we start talking about programming in November for the following year, so we're constantly thinking forward about our programming and the needs of our students. And we did this this year, you'll see that there's one, you know, change that's fairly significant to our programming that we'd like to preview with you. The first change is really in the start, the dismissal time. So typically, some of our programs have dismissed at 11:30, some of them have dismissed at 12 o'clock. This year, we're recommending that the dismissal be uniform and that everyone dismiss at 11:30. And the reason that we're doing this is so that our special education programming across our different, you know, classrooms will all end at the same time, allowing us flexibility to move students in order to meet the needs of special education students. So it's really allowing fluidity and the capacity to change our programming. We have had some glitches in the past where we feel like we had a half an hour in between some dismissal times and other dismissal times and it just creates some challenges for us and so we're really trying to end at the same time in order to offer that consistency and the fluidity of programming, okay? The second change really has to do with our programming for four-year-olds. In the past, we've had a morning program and an afternoon program, a two-and-a-half-hour morning, two-and-a-half-hour afternoon. Based on the needs of our students this year, we're recommending what I'm calling a transitional program, which is basically a combination of that two-and-a-half-day morning program and a full-day program. So we're recommending that on Monday and Thursday, we have an integrated portion that runs from 9:00 to 11:30 and then we're recommending on, I apologize, three days, Monday, Thursday, Friday, and on Tuesday and Wednesday, we're recommending a full-day program so that the integrated program, you know, maintained for the full day. So that's in order to allow us some direct instruction for students who require, but also allowing us some time, more time for students to be able to generalize their skills through that full-day program. So a little bit of a hybrid classroom, okay? Yeah. And then finally, you know, the other change that we're recommending is an increase to tuition. I've been here nine years and we've had one year where we considered a very small increase. It was minimal, it was like a dollar and so, per hour. And so we're recommending, and I had provided a chart for you so you could see when you, we're compared to our 10 kind of communities, how we stand with regard to tuition and fees as it relates to the other 10 communities that we're typically compared to. And when we do this, you can see some of the differences that we highlighted in the current and proposed tuition. And it's really, it's 10%, it sounds, but it really, you know, doesn't translate into much of a, in much of a tuition increase. So the big change is, is obviously with that four-day program. One of the implications for the four-day program that I just wanted to, you know, relay is that by meeting the needs of the special education students and offering that hybrid program, we are reducing the number of peer slots that we're offering for next year. It's by eight students, so we'll lose those eight students, but yet we're also able to afford our special education students, you know, a program to meet their needs.
Does that cover legally for peer role models when it does for that, because they had the morning with them?
Yes.
So that's great, so they get the extra early intervention?
Yeah.
Direct instruction in the afternoon?
Right.
And then I just had one question about the parking.
Sure.
If everyone's, because my children went through preschool, we love it, great program.
Yeah.
People are, you know, trying to get in there. It is the best bargain in town.
Yes.
Of the surrounding area. So I personally, I think that 10% is more than reasonable.
Right.
But I know, do you still dismiss in the back? Well, everybody getting dismissed at 11:30 is not going to be troublesome? Just a question.
Yeah.
Have you thought about it?
No, two of our, two of our classes dismissed in the back, two of our classes dismissed in the front.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
I just want to introduce Alicia Whitehead, who is our lead preschool teacher who's responding from the audience. Is that weird? So in order to put together the recommendations for tuitions, we did look at comparison data with other communities. We haven't raised tuitions for a number of years and it's been a commitment of the committee to create programming that's as accessible to the public as possible. But as Dr. Tupper mentioned, even with the 10% increase, now that we've done that comparison study, we're still the lowest in most, in terms of comparison with other private preschools as well as other public school programs. So as you said, it sounds like it's a significant increase, but if the tuition's $125, 10% is $12 a month. So it's not, because we're talking small dollars, the 10% isn't a significant increase in terms of overall annual cost.
Well, and given the amount of time that has gone between tuition raises, that's pretty impressive in and of itself, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I've been here nine years and we've had one year where we considered a very, very small increase, small increase, yeah.
So we haven't moved this at all, nine years? These are, I mean, I know we adjusted the programs and...
We did one minor, mid.
We had one year, I think, two or three years ago, yeah, two years ago.
Okay, I have some memory of that, just kind of recall.
Yeah, it was very small and it wasn't to every program, it was only to a couple of programs, yeah. The other thing that I want to mention is when we look at the preschool programming, I know I had given you guys this form here, when we talk about the two-and-a-half-hour program, the afternoon from 11:30 to 2:45 is the non-integrated time and that's where we do, those afternoons where we do a lot of direct instruction, we really target skills and for our special education students. And then the programs, the integrated programs that go from 9:00 to 2:45 really allow us time to work on the generalization of skills. So we've got, we've got a really nice combination of programming too. We've got some of those times, the half-day programs, we've got the full day and then we're proposing this kind of hybrid transitional programming.
And I think just in keeping with Dr. Tupper said, our programs are intended to be flexible. We have to design them around the needs of the students coming forward. So they do shift periodically based on the number of students and the needs of the students we're serving.
Thank you.
Overall, with the tuition increase, although Dr. Tupper mentioned that by reducing the four-day program from two half-day programs to one program, we do lose about eight tuition slots with the increase in tuition. We expect that to be a financial wash, so it won't have a significant budget impact to our overall budget.
That's right. Thank you for mentioning that.
So we need a motion to vote to accept the changes to programming and the recommendation for the 10% increase in pre-K fees?
I'll make a motion to change the program and increase the 10% tuition. Right, Tupper?
I'll second the motion.
Further discussion? I, I get everything on here, I certainly get the, in terms of comparison, everything else. I, I struggle a bit and I understand what it breaks down to per month of going nine years without anything and then a 10% increase in one year and I understand the money, like you just, you gave the example, it's $12.50 a month.
Sure, right.
But I mean, someone would say that maybe they have multiple children that are part of this and various things. I mean, that is a bit of an impact.
Yeah.
That's, I'm having a hard time with that a bit. I don't know if there's another alternative and I also don't know if I'm alone on this.
So your concern is around whether or not, if someone had twins in the program or they had a student in a three-day program, a three-year-old program and a four-year-old program?
Yeah, you could accept multiple siblings that could be part of this somehow. I don't know the scenarios. I mean, I guess, I guess maybe my question is, is like, are we, in looking at this, and I know some of this is a guesstimate as far as next year, what's the, how many, what's the impact of this? I mean, there's a certain people, like numbers-wise, people leaving the program, coming in the program, do we have any sense of that whatsoever at this point or?
Yeah, yeah, so when we've looked at our, I think Alicia could speak to a little bit more of our special education referrals coming in. I mean, we already know that we have six students turning three, you know, over the course of the summer in July and August. But when we look at the trends, one of the things that we've really seen is that the past two years in particular, we've had a large, we have enough students on our waitlists for full-day and half-day morning programs. The afternoon program, like Julie Gallagher's half-day afternoon for fours, has been less attended. We've ranged anywhere. We typically start lower, like with seven or eight students, and then we trend up to 10 or 11 by, you know, November. But we're seeing a large increase in the number, you know, of threes and fours entering. That's part of why we split the three-year-old program this year as well. Yeah, so.
And in terms of costs, we are required to provide the programming to students who require specialized instruction free of cost, so that does not impact your specialized population. As Dr. Tupper said, the programming for our typically developing peers is not a requirement that the schools provide. That's just a service that we provide to the community. So if you have families that are looking for pre-K programming, if you look at any of the programs that are available in town, their cost is significantly higher.
Oh, definitely.
So even with the 10% increase, it's a voluntary program and it's still under what we have, what they would be paying elsewhere.
I know, we're trying...
And the pre-K, the pre-K tuitions that we bring in offset the costs of our support staff in the pre-K program, some of our teacher salaries, so this proposal would keep it budget neutral. I had the same feedback when we first looked at it with Dr. Tupper about the 10% increase. We really could increase 25% to be competitive. That's a huge hit for families. We made the decision last year, we talked about the possibility of increasing, but we wanted to do more of a comprehensive study and regional comparison before we brought that recommendation forward. So I would support the 10% increase at this point because I do think it is an optional program, it's a voluntary program and it's still significantly under the market value in town.
So it's high value.
Right.
Right, yeah, thank you, yeah, right. Thomas, do you feel like we answered your question with regard to?
Oh, no, the question was answered. I just, I'm having a, I'm having an eternal philosophical struggle with this and I don't...
10% is a big number. I mean, like, it's a big number. That's what I thought too. And then you look at the numbers and, or it's $10 a month and then you...
I think that's what I'm getting stuck on, is you hear 10%, you're like, oh my god, and then you look at, oh, it's $12.50, for example, for the one program and that's slightly different, but there is a real-world impact to that and there is, I mean, 10% is still 10% and then I guess the inclination then becomes, okay, then next year is another 10% and, you know, and I don't want to start that either.
No, right.
And I understand the point, obviously, as comparison to private things, it's a great deal, it's top-quality programming. I understand all that, I just, I'm always loathe to raise anything.
Yeah.
But I also understand there's reality at a certain point as well, so.
And actually, I had the same response as well when I saw the 10% and then when we looked at the implications, you know, like per month and per year, you know, that made, you know, I think it justified the increase. One of the other things that I found interesting when we were looking at comparison, you know, we're trying to compare ourselves to other districts, we did the 10 regional, but we also, I'm on a list serve in Massachusetts and there was a big email going around, 250 special education directors and a couple of communities just consider a regular increase every year, like anywhere from 2.5% to 4% to preschool programming, so that's what some communities do. So we haven't had an increase for, you know, truly, for, you know, since I've been here, which is April of 2012 with that one small...
Which I think is how I'm able to then walk around my philosophical wrestling match I'm having with myself.
I do, I totally understand where you're coming from.
Because of, of course, it's 1% a year, in essence.
And that is then the goal of the committee, is to keep the program as accessible as possible.
Like, we, I mean, I couldn't even get my daughter, she was waitlisted two years in a row as a typical peer and then my son's typical peer when he was a late five or something like that, he, his last year before he started kindergarten. The value for what you're paying is tremendous and compared to, I mean, he'd been in private daycare since he was a baby at that point, number one, we had an annual increase in that daycare fee every single year and that was fine, that was fine, you went to a great daycare, I'm not disparaging them, anything like that, but it was a 2% to 3% increase every year in a private facility where we were getting childcare and so to, to implement that, that's one approach, but to say you're playing catch-up, I mean, if you haven't raised the tuition in nine years, 10% is...
Across the board for all classrooms.
On an annual, you know, I mean, I guess as a parent, I probably would be, I feel like I would be comfortable stomaching that and still feel like I was getting great value for...
No, it's definitely good value. I'm not, I'm not questioning at all the values, that makes sense and I can, yeah, it's just like, just a 10% figure is having a hard time following, but I can understand the logic.
The number of students with that need specialized help has increased, so you need to have more therapy materials, you need to have more therapists, you need to have more resources.
The one other thing I would say is that this committee had, several years ago, made the decision that we would provide a sliding fee scale for families in pre-K that are struggling to, to pay the tuition. So there is a sliding fee scale based on income that supports families. We had it in place for the full-day kindergarten, it was a requirement of the Department of Ed and the committee voted to extend that to pre-K. So if it's a financial hardship for a family, we do consider reduced tuition rates in those circumstances.
Yeah, so that's definitely something that's accessible, yeah. And I just, I do want to highlight something that Ingrid had mentioned earlier as well because I was also hit by the 10%, you know, and Karen said, oh my goodness, but then when you look at it, like for Alicia's five-hour and seven-and-a-half-hour weekly program, it's an increase of $12.50 a month for the two-day and $18.70, you know, a month for the three-day. So when you're looking at the apples-to-apples, because we're not changing that program, that, you know, the increase is very small.
And if you break it down when you're, when we were looking at basically an hourly rate, it's like about $5 and change per hour for programming, so that's really low.
$5.70 an hour. That's what it is, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for your questions.
I think we're prepared to now move on.
Yeah, that's good.
We need to vote.
What's that? Yeah, so we have to...
Bill sent discussion lines?
I think so. Okay, so, all in favor? Aye.
All in. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And we would love to have you come and we've got our preschool program and our special ed program in general. I know I offer it every year, but we really would love to see you here. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a preliminary overview of our draft budget. The budget subcommittee has been working diligently since November to prepare a budget proposal for the 2020-2021 school year. You have a preliminary draft copy of the budget in your packet and we will be having our full budget, public hearing on the budget in March. At that time, we'll do the full presentation and walk through line by line how our budget's changing, how it compares to other communities, what our per pupil cost looks like. For tonight's purposes, I just want to highlight some of the changes. So on page three of the budget, there's a summary, a summary page that looks like this that'll highlight the changes. In our current, in our current fiscal year, most of our budget increase is driven by fixed costs. We have about $326,000 in contractual obligations and that's steps and lane changes and an anticipated cost of living increase for teachers. We are in the process of negotiating a new contract, so that isn't the set dollar amount, that is the, is an estimate of what that could look like. We are estimating a 2% COLA for our non-union staff, that is about $70,000. We did look at comparison studies when we look at salaries, so our non-union staff would include our custodial positions, our secretarial positions, our food service program, SAC employees. When we looked, we wanted, we want to remain competitive, it's difficult to fill those positions right now and the 2% will keep us more competitive with the market. So we have about 387,000 fixed cost increases for salary. We also, a large portion of our budget increase is driven by the changes that we're experiencing in enrollment. Earlier this year, we presented to the committee the NESDEC enrollment projection study. They were suggesting that they expected based on the 40B housing projects and the construction in town, the number of building permits that have been pulled and the census data, that we would see an increase, a significant increase in kindergarten enrollment this year. Because of that, we planned in our budget that we would need an additional kindergarten teacher and an assistant to staff that classroom. We also moved kindergarten registration up. We did it in January last year and then again in January this year. Our current kindergarten registration's at 147 students.
Wow.
That is significantly over what we had last year for enrollment and it's consistent with what NESDEC is projecting. Based on our current class size policy of 20, no more than 21 students in kindergarten classrooms, we will need that eighth session next year. Typically, from the time kindergarten registration closes until September when we open, we usually pick up an additional 10%. So that's based on the last five years of enrollment data. If we see another 10%, we'll be close to 160 when we open. So we do expect, NESDEC, I think, projected 163, so we're trending in that direction. So that's about... So that's about a percentage of our total budget increase is based on new growth. We also are asking for a .6 special education teacher. We have a comprehensive, substantially separate program at the HL of Day School. It's our global developmental delays program and program for students on the autism spectrum. It provides very intensive, individualized instruction. We have students in that program that will be aging up, and we need to build a receiving program at the Freeman Kennedy in order to meet those students' needs. So there's a request for an additional .6 special education teacher, as well as an increase in occupational therapist, timed by .1. There are two recommendations in terms of administrative support. We have a team chair position. The team chair facilitates all of our special education eligibility meetings, as well as reevaluation meetings. We have that, we had to reduce that position in last year's budget by .2. So we went from a .8 team chair to a .6. It's really difficult with the increasing numbers of students that are being evaluated in the increase in the special education population to manage that in .6. So we're not recommending a full restoration, but we are recommending we add .1. So it would be a .7 position. We're still not where we were last year, but that will help us offset some of the demand. Additionally, we have two .5 assistant principals in the district. We have a .5 assistant at the Freeman Kennedy, which is Ms. Saldana. The other portion of her job is .5 curriculum director for math and science. And at the HL of Day, we have a .5 assistant principal, Anita Mecklenburg. And the other .5 of her position is the Director of Social Studies and English Language Arts. We are recommending that we add a 1.0 assistant principal position. We really need full-time assistant principals in each building. We have had, in the past eight years that I've been here, we've had five people in the assistant principal roles. The feedback is really, it's two full-time jobs merged into one. They, when we do exit interviews, we continually hear the same theme, it's not a doable job. The demands of the curriculum with the changes to state frameworks, they are responsible for professional development programming. They're also responsible for coaching and supportive teachers, analyzing our assessment data, making changes to programs, developing new benchmark assessments, that's a full-time job. And what we're finding is when they're away to work on the curriculum part, we're short-staffed in terms of managing all of the other responsibilities of running the building. Over the past probably six or seven years, there's been a number of changes at the state level. So there's new requirements for teacher evaluation, they're very labor-intensive and time-intensive to do them well. So that takes a lot of administrative time to oversee. We also, as we've talked about, have really built some excellent programs in district. Our therapeutic programs have expanded, we're serving almost all of our population within our schools and within our district. But there are regulations from the state in terms of oversight of those specialized programs that take a lot of administrative time. So we have, for the past six years, talked about this need, and we haven't brought it forward because the town's resources are limited. The school committee, as well as the administrative team, has prioritized classroom positions, instructional positions. All the cuts that we've seen over the last several years have been clerical staff, administrative support. We really need to address that at this time because it's just not sustainable, the way that we're moving forward. So we are recommending the additional assistant principal position. In order to help fund that, we are reducing in other areas. So we are reducing or anticipating a reduction of one paraprofessional position. That, we don't anticipate that being a layoff. We're very lucky in Norfolk that we hire a lot of certified teachers as paraprofessionals, and we have some turnover in that department because people are looking for full-time positions. So one position reduction there. We have some savings that we anticipate in special education tuitions and transportation. And we also have tried really hard to level fund all other budgets. We are delaying $25,000 of technology replacement that is scheduled in our five-year tech replacement plan. We're going to delay that by an additional year because we, again, the town's revenue is limited. We are also, we also made some reductions in other supply lines that you can see if you look through the overall spreadsheet. In the HL of Day services, we have an increase of $10,000, that is to furnish the new kindergarten classroom. So it's not a supply account, it's we need desks, chairs, books, curriculum materials. So again, about a percentage of the overall increase, which we're at 4.4 right now, is driven by that new growth. There are other things that we feel are critical needs for the district, but we are not moving forward with asking for at this time. So we would really like that new position at the Freeman Kennedy, that .6 special education, to be a full-time teaching position. We're only asking for .6 for the first year. We would like to add a day for all of our paraprofessional staff in their, well, they don't have a contract, but in their work schedule for training and participation in curriculum planning and programming. We, right now, they only work one additional day. So they are here for the opening day, and then they have one additional day that they can participate in professional development. Because that staff is supporting a lot of our students that are struggling, we really want to better prepare them in terms of our curriculum, our initiatives, the pedagogy, the practices, so that they can effectively support classroom instruction. We are, because we're adding classes at the HL of Day next year, we're going to be short for time for specialists, so art, music, physical education. We are hoping to be able to stretch that for next year, but if this growth continues, we're going to need additional, at least a .1 in art and music, and a .2 for physical education. The .2 is because students have physical education twice a week. We would like to see our library positions go full-time, they're both .8, because they, the librarians are meeting with classes and providing direct instruction to students. They don't have much time in their schedule for library management. That's really challenging in terms of updating our collections, managing the digital resources. So we would like to see those be full-time. We would like to see the team chair go back to at least .8, if not a full-time position. And additional things that we have brought forward in the past, we've talked about restoring the World Language Program, adding support for our developmental math program. And in the last two cycles of budget, we've cut all of our clerical support in the business office. We would like to bring some clerical support back for that, as well as we reduced the clerical support at the Freeman Kennedy. Given the limited funds available in the town, we are delaying those asks at this point and just requesting what we think is critical to the core instructional program. Any general questions, comments, thoughts? And again, we'll do the full-breadth presentation when we do the public hearing next month.
I guess just for the general public, it's just because, in my professional opinion, you know, being in special ed for so long, it is so critical for districts to develop their own in-house programming. And just for the general public, when a student, when it's decided that a student's needs can't be met within district, and please jump in if I'm not explaining it right, then the district has to pay for that student to be outplaced at a different facility, which could cost three, four times, five times what we spend per pupil here. So I think it is critical to, you know, for people to know that, yes, we're asking for a .6. However, the amount of money that you're going to save in the long run if you do a quality program is really, really, really important. Otherwise, it could be deemed, you know, not a free and appropriate education for that child. And then we are legally bound by a judge to send that child out. So I just want to explain that to the public, that it is really critical that we get that .6, if not more, position. And that it is important that we have those therapeutic programs in-house so that those kids who are moving up from HOD and they're going up to Freeman have continuity for their own education, so that we meet their individualized education needs. And so I do think it is very, very critical. Did I explain that okay?
And then we just say, beyond the cost savings that the districts realize, and we present that when we do the public hearing, we save over $300,000 a year by maintaining strong educational programs. But beyond the cost savings, it's also ethically the right thing to do. We want to see our students be able to be educated with their peers in their hometown.
Absolutely.
And we have outstanding staff and outstanding programs, so we can offer oftentimes stronger programs than parents could access elsewhere.
You can see by the collaboration between CPAC and SOE.
Absolutely.
And then my second thing was just about moving the assistant principal up to 1.0. I have had feedback from the community stating, you know, why is the assistant principal leaving? Why is that happening? And so it is important to have someone who could be dedicated full-time because a few years ago, the state did reevaluate, change how teachers are evaluated. So it's no more like, let me observe a lesson, and you're done, and out of here, I'll see you again in the spring. It is, because again, in my professional experience, it is hours and hours of work on both ends. It's no more like, oh, you did a nice job, or do this next time. It is critical thinking, and it's invaluable, and it's, it is hours and hours. And then on top of it, an assistant principal also handles discipline issues. And then to do curriculum on top of it, you just can't do both best. You just can't, you have a lack of equality education. So I would be in full support of it.
Any other questions?
Just for anyone who's here tonight watching and participating, or who might be watching at home, it's worthwhile to note that this has been a great snapshot overview of what the 4.4% we're asking for would encompass, which is not, you know, it's not everything we need, and it's certainly not everything we want. We have presented, Ingrid did a wonderful presentation as part of an ongoing transparency and pragmatic dialogue with the town, what less than that would look like, how it would impact curriculum and programming in both of the schools. So that was taped, I think, in early January before the Select Board. And it showed what, it didn't contemplate this number because the Budget Subcommittee hadn't gotten, we hadn't gotten here yet. But it contemplated what 3% would look like, and it contemplated what 0% would look like. So if you're interested in comparing and contrasting what different projections and funding levels would look like compared to the 4%, 4.4% we're asking for, it's worth looking into.
Any other questions? So next month, we will bring forward and do the full-budget presentation. We'll go line by line, we'll give comparison data. We'll talk further about some of the positions and what they look like and what the needs are around staffing. We will also probably give you an update on kindergarten enrollment. As I said, we're already at 147, which would mean that we need that aid classroom. We have never lost children from this time, although some may not, some may not attend, or some parents may decide they're going to give their child another growth year. We still pick up so many that we've never started in September with less than we ended K enrollment with.
And to make it clear, we are losing the computer room to make room for the other aid classroom.
We haven't determined what we're, what we're going to do in terms of space, but we are out of space at HL of Day next year. We need two additional classrooms, we need an additional second grade and an additional kindergarten. The second grade is not a budget add because we're reducing a classroom at the Freeman. So it's cost-neutral in terms of staffing-based, and we do that every year based on enrollment. So there, we need two additional classroom spaces. Over the April vacation, we need to convert the technology office in order to create another space where we could house some instructional staff. But we will be short of classrooms, and we're going to have to look at that as a district, how we're going to accommodate that additional space. Losing a computer room is a possibility, but we are looking at some creative other options in terms of relocating some other things to try to create the space, but we are out of space.
Spacing and enrollment projections have been covered quite a bit recently. Again, for anyone in the audience or who might be watching at home, lots of information available on forecasted enrollment.
And we will be going forward at the March school committee meeting and joining the Select Board in March to request that the committees, both the Board and the committee, vote to allow us to apply to MSBA for a building construction project. We presented the space study and what that would look like to add in addition to Freeman Kennedy School in order to meet the demands of the increasing growth. So that's also on our website if you want to see the growth and enrollment study and the projections.
And just to clarify, the meeting, the grant, this would just be for the grant application for anyone, again, who might be watching? This is not an approval of the project, it's not, it's just everyone agreeing that this is something we may want to do in the future. So why don't we try and obtain grant funds to defray the cost to the town to execute the project?
As a quick aside, referencing the process going forward here, I spoke to Kevin in Call Cut, I believe it was last week. So this is for the committee's benefit. And so to, I think Medora mentioned this in her point, the transparency that we're trying to be is out there and is open with the budget as possible. I invited the Select Board, if they wish to attend our public hearing on the budget next month. This way, in the event there's any questions, we'll provide some time. We haven't exactly worked out the entire structure of it yet, but there would be an opportunity for, at that point, to ask some questions rather than kind of, in fairness to them, putting them a bit behind the eight ball, where if the advisory committee gets it, and then they kind of get involved in it. If we could potentially head off any kind of issues or answer any questions, that's the intent of that next month. So just as an FYI for everybody else.
And we do, just in terms of the overall town budget, we do recognize the 4.4% is high, and the town revenue is coming in lower than they were expecting, so that's a stretch. We always work through this process and try to negotiate and try to work things. We might need to come back and make further reductions from what we proposed, but this is our starting place, and these are, we only have included in the budget things that we think are critical needs. All right, in keeping with that, the next item on the agenda, let me just get the right exhibit, is about the Special Education Reserve Fund. So let me just grab that, and we can talk. And please feel free, people in our audience, a lot of people have kids at home and also have early work hours, so feel free to go if you need to. In our past budget requests that we brought forward for the town, we have had a placeholder for special education in the budget in order to allow us, if we have new students move into the district that are either outplaced or have specialized needs that we need to program for, we have had a placeholder that allows us to respond to those unexpected costs. In the budget proposal that we just presented, we do not have a placeholder built in for next year. In order to add a placeholder, we'd be looking at an increase of over 5%, which we know the town is not able to fund. What we are recommending is that districts under the master general laws, Chapter 40, Section 13E, are allowed to establish a special education reserve fund that can be used to pay for unanticipated or unbudgeted special education out-of-district tuition or transportation costs. So in doing that, what we would be, what we would have to do is, we'd have to have the school board vote to submit a warrant article to town meeting, and then it would have to be voted on at town meeting. What that reserve fund would allow us to do would be to put funding in, whether it's unspent funds from this year, if we have any fiscal savings, or if the town decided to transfer money from a stabilization fund or other account, to establish this reserve account that would allow us, if we had unexpected costs that came up, to access funding without having to go back to the town to another town meeting. The way that that reserve fund would work would be that if we needed to access the funding, both the school committee and the Select Board would have to vote to transfer funding from that reserve fund into the school operating budget. But we think that because we don't have a placeholder next year in the budget, and knowing that the town is struggling in terms of funding all departments, in the future, this could reduce our ask. If we knew we had a reserve fund that we could access for emergencies, we wouldn't have to build an annual placeholder into the budget. The agreement we have at the town in the past is if we have a placeholder and don't use it, we return that money at the end of the fiscal year. This would just allow us to fund a separate account that we could use for emergencies without having to build that into the operating budget.
So we have a placeholder this year, correct?
This year, but not next year.
Okay, I know, so we have one this year. So in the event, so we wouldn't be able to, because it wouldn't be to the May town meeting, and you know, it wouldn't even make the warrants, and we couldn't even use it. Well, say we had something left this year, we wouldn't be able to utilize it next year, I guess, time-wise, it would work out.
No, we have to, whatever we don't spend by the end of the fiscal year, has to go back to the town.
Okay, so this would then benefit us for fiscal '22.
Yeah, for next year.
Correct, if this went through, okay.
The next school year.
For next school year, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then there's a cap of what we're actually would put into this, correct?
Yeah, I believe it's like 250, 300,000 is the max. I'm looking at Todd, Todd Sarr, business consultant manager, for anybody in the audience who doesn't know. Do you want to come up and jump into this one?
Not particularly.
Okay.
No, I think it's 250, I think is what was said, right, 250,000 is the max that could ever go in there?
Yeah, it is a percentage of the total operating budget that you're allowed to keep.
But the placeholder is well below the cap, either way.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, there was 80, something, yes.
And then 25 for transportation. And I believe the reserve fund, when we looked at it, I believe it's about, for us, it would be about 250,000, 300,000 max.
The goal is not to. The goal is not to fund this up to the cap, it's really just to, it's a stopgap measure.
Should anything happen, the reserve.
Should anything happen next year, because we can't fit it into next year's budget and we are most likely going to end in a favorable position this year. This is a way to carry forward funding.
Reserve funds.
That's already been planned for this year that we're just not going to use. So it's not added spending, it's just segregating monies.
And it allows us to anticipate and respond in a timely and appropriate fashion to a.
Exactly.
Outplacement need that might arise in the future as opposed to delaying an outplacement that maybe is recommended in December until May town meeting, which.
And once you establish it, you could continue to. Once you establish the fund, you could add additional funds annually to that, up to, up to the cap. And, you know, again, if you have one student that moves into the district that's outplaced, that can be a $125,000 bill that's unanticipated. So we do have a placeholder in this year's budget. We have had to access some of it for unexpected special education costs, but we anticipate we will have some funding. But the select board could also supplement that with, with other savings and other town department accounts and give us enough that we could respond next year and, again, not have to go in with an ask for a placeholder in the next operating budget.
Yeah, I like the idea.
And the, just so I'm clear too, the access to those funds, it's not an independent school board or, or school.
Joint decision, it's a joint decision. It is a joint decision.
The select board becomes involved.
So we would have to come and request the school committee vote to access some of those funds for particular costs and then the select board would also have to vote. And I believe it's a majority vote, vote of each board in order to transfer that fund.
I'm just curious, Ingrid, I'm sorry.
Yep.
So what if in the situation that it, they're like, nope, we're not going to pay for that out, out of district, or nope, you're not getting the money. And we know legally, you, judge says you have to send them, you have to send them.
Right.
Where does that money come from?
So there's a couple of different things that can happen. If we have unexpected costs that we incur during the year, we can go back to town meeting and request an additional appropriation to the schools. We had to do that once before when we had unexpected kindergarten enrollment growth, but we can go back to town meeting to request funds and the town meeting participants can vote to appropriate that fund. The other thing that can happen is if you incur costs in January and you don't have town meeting until May, we have had to not fill open positions, you might have to freeze budget spending, you would have to manage that until you knew you had additional funding coming in.
Would that be freezing budgets across the town to pay for it or just?
No, no, only within our school department. So we have in, in the past, had to put a freezing spend freeze in place for a period of time until we knew that we were tracking okay in terms of the budget. And, you know, it's not the ideal, it's not what you want to do, that's what protection the stabilization fund would provide.
No, that would be, yeah.
We've, we've survived, I mean, we froze a few years ago to help the town, the snow and ice deficit, right?
Yeah, the snow and ice, and then froze in April and didn't do anything for the rest of the fiscal year.
That's correct. And then we were able to return additional funds to the town in that situation.
The problem with that is it's not instantaneous. You can't always.
Right.
You know, stop that spending in time for.
And then have sufficient funds to defray the outplacement.
The expenses going out the door and you have to make, play catch-up a little bit.
Yep, right.
So it puts you in a really, into a corner.
Absolutely. So we would need a vote tonight to move forward with requesting that the town put a warrant article on the May town meeting for the establishment of a school special education reserve fund. And the information and the draft warrant article language is in the back of that packet for you. It basically just says, to see if the town will vote to accept Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 13E, in order to establish a special education reserve fund to be utilized in the upcoming years of unanticipated or unbudgeted special education costs out of district tuition or transportation and to transfer from available funds or otherwise provide an initial amount to the reserve fund and basically to establish the fund.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I move that the school committee approve a warrant article for May town meeting establishing a special education reserve fund as further discussed in the proposed warrant article previously in this meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Kim?
And I just want to clarify, that special education reserve fund would be for Norfolk Elementary School only. The King Philip, because of the regional structure, they are allowed to retain savings at the end of the year in an emergency and deficiency fund because if you think about it, if they had an unexpected cost, they'd have to go to three different towns for a town meeting vote. So they have different bylaws and they're allowed by, under the Mass General Law to keep their own reserve fund.
Okay.
Okay. If it's okay with the committee, I want to switch items five and six and talk about the early retirement incentive next while we're on budget. That's okay?
Yes.
All right. So as I mentioned, our preliminary draft budget is at 4.4%. The initial numbers that the town had in terms of looking at what they thought they could fund for budget was closer to 3.07% for the elementary schools. Again, that was preliminary numbers and the budget process, they, they're still getting revenue projections in and all the departments are still working, so that was early. But we do anticipate that the town may not be able to fund the full 4.4 request. So we are looking for other avenues to realize some savings that would help us reduce our budget and one of them that we've done in the past is to offer an early retirement incentive. What that would do would be to allow us to use any savings that we see over the course of this year and offset, basically offer an incentive to teachers who are considering retiring. The terms of the incentive in a draft document are attached to the memo. When a teacher retires, the overall budget impacts to us, if teachers leave at the top salary step, which often happens by the time people approach retirement, we budget Masters V for new hires, the net savings can be between 25 and 30,000 for a position. This year, we were anticipating we would see a couple of retirements. We have budgeted, when people retire, there's contractual obligations for sick leave, buyback and other benefits. We have that budgeted, so we have funds available because we don't have any people that have announced retirement, we have funds available that would support offering this early retirement incentive. The terms are pretty much identical to the retirement incentive we offered three years ago, back in 2015. It's a one-time $10,000 bonus for, for teachers who notify us by a specific date of their intent to retire and it is irrevocable. Again, it allows us to best use money that we have this year to help create savings and offset costs for next year.
And then as soon as, as soon as everyone's notified by April 15th, then can you post the position?
I'm sorry?
So the early retirement.
Yep.
Means that you still, you possibly still have to fill that, let's say it's a fifth grade teacher.
Right.
You still have to fill that position for the following year.
Yes.
But you have the cost saving because it will be a younger, most likely, someone lower on the step.
Right.
So would you be able to start advertising for that position once they're definitely?
We do, we would advertise for current positions and then we typically advertise anticipated, so the new positions in the budget proposal, the new kindergarten and the assistant, we have to advertise as anticipated vacancies until the funding's approved at town meeting in May. But yes, if we have current existing staff members that notify us of intent to retire, we would post that. And we typically have really been aggressive in terms of our recruiting for new teachers, so we, we tend to post all anticipated vacancies early, early April so that we can be aggressive in terms of going to career fairs and outreach. But we can't fill the anticipated vacancies that are new in this budget until the funding's approved.
Got it, just want to make sure we have a good pool of candidates.
Yeah, we do. So we need a vote to move forward with offering the early retirement incentive. I did have, by the way, I had legal counsel review the draft and also because it's a benefit that we would be offering to members of the NTA, we have to collectively bargain that, so they've also had counsel review it and are comfortable with the proposal as stated.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the early retirement incentive?
We'll make a motion to accept the early retirement incentive as discussed.
All second. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Great. The next item on the agenda for today is King Philip. And at our last meeting, Mr. Zinni came and spoke with the committee about their early start time committee that has been looking at research in terms of adolescent brain development and they are suggesting that there's, there is a significant body of research that indicates that students at that age level benefit from additional sleep. They are recommending, or they had recommended that they wanted to look at moving the KP start time to later, but an unanticipated consequence of that would be that we would no longer be able to share busing and transportation, which would drive both of our budgets up in terms of transportation costs. So what KP decided was that they would reach out to see if any elementary districts were willing to consider voluntarily swapping start times. In order for that to work, we would have to start school at 7:30 for students, which would mean that we would be starting to pick students up at about 6:50 in the morning. I attached to this the document that the, the early start committee put together that looks at all of the districts that have changed start time from middle and high school. Of all of the districts that are listed, there's only two that have start times close to 7:30, one is Fall River, and I believe the other is Cambridge. Nobody else has elementary students, students starting that early.
I think we could.
Yeah, the concern would be kids out in the dark waiting at bus stops. I'm not sure that the NTA would be interested, that's contractual, but they've asked us to give a definitive decision so that they can make a decision on how to move forward.
I mean, before we put a motion on the floor for this, we'll kind of change the order up a little bit discussion-wise. I, I can't see how this is remotely feasible. I don't, I don't feel comfortable at all with kids being out ridiculously early. There's a number of other issues with this. I understand what they're trying to do, I, I get it, that's a real need, it just, it can't be done via the elementary school students, so does anyone have?
I don't disagree.
Something to the contrary? I mean, I, I'm open to the idea if they can come up with some kind of variation, I just don't see how it's possible.
Yeah, I wouldn't support that early.
Yeah, this is, it's just not realistic and there's a host of other problems that go with this, so.
Mm-hmm.
So do we have, we'll also do the motion, but do we have a motion for accepting the recommendation for the King Philip early start time?
So moved.
Can I do a second?
All second.
Okay, any other further discussion on it? So then just clarify, no, we'll obviously be voting against it, so all those opposed?
Aye.
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 I guess I did that sort of backwards.
He made that very good, they're paying attention. We have an affirmative motion.
Thomas 12 curveball.
So good job you passed the thing of paying attention, so that's very nice. So we are unanimously opposed, just in case anyone's clarified. So again, I wish them well, I just don't, it's just not feasible at this time for us, unfortunately.
I know, we have all the money in the world, it'd be like, okay.
If I owned my own bus company, I would have voted the other way.
But I just would have made the motion different and made it confusing. So, sorry.
So the next item on the agenda, and in the interest of time, I'm just going to highlight a few things and then if people would like, I'm happy to bring it back and discuss it further at our next meeting. But annually, I provide the school committee with a baseline and benchmark report that looks at a wide range of district data. We've talked about at the last meeting, the principals presented with the curriculum directors, the MCAS results and talked about our overall performance, but MCAS is only one measure of school success and school effectiveness. So in the baseline and benchmark report, we provide you data in terms of our overall demographics and how those are changing. The biggest change in terms of demographics that we've seen is that we have a significant increase in the number of students that are English language learners. Back in 2013, we only had one or two, now we have over 40 students that are eligible for English language learning support. The next demographic piece is our special education population by age group. And again, overall, we have seen an increase from 2014 to 2019 of about 40 students that are eligible for special education services. Our percentage has gone up from about 14.5 to 18.5 in that ballpark. So we've seen an increase in the number of students requiring specially designed instruction and special education supports. Other data that I just want to highlight is, we always provide, we have comparison communities that we use as benchmark measures for all of our different statistics. They're identified by the Department of Education as comparative, comparative communities because they are also K8 or K6 systems, they don't include middle school and high school. They're also, according to the Department of Education, the most demographically similar. So in terms of class size, we have seen an increase in Norfolk over the past several years. Back in 2015, our average class size was about 18. We have been up to 21. In the last two years, our average class size is at 20. We have gone from being the bottom in terms of class size to, of the comparison group to being solidly in the middle towards the upper end. So again, our average class size this year was 20. Teacher educational experience, this is a metric that we always look at. We have 83, about 83% of our teachers have advanced degrees and about 60% of our teachers have been with Norfolk for over 10 years. Our teacher retention rate is very high compared to the state, so when we hire people, we provide professional development training and support, they tend to remain in Norfolk. Our overall three-year teacher retention rate is 87%. Student attendance, we have a very high rate of student attendance, 96.7% of our students attend all of the days of school. That's higher than the state average. Our student discipline data that's also included in this report looks at the number of students disciplined annually, whether it's in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. Data is suppressed if your total population group is under six because the concern from the Department of Education is that those students could be identifiable. So we don't have, in 2016, '17, we only had four students, so any additional data in terms of the type of discipline is suppressed. 2017 and '18, we also had four students. '18 and '19, there were nine students. And so there's a little bit more, the majority of our students, if we do have disciplinary action, it's typically in-school suspension. Technology, we also look at. Our ratio of students per computer is lower than the state average that we have, not 1,001, we have 100% of our, there's a typo, sorry. 100% of our classrooms have Wi-Fi access and internet access, so I'll correct that.
It's impressive numbers, 1,001.
1,001, we're really outperforming. Other data that I think is really important, and again, we put this baseline and benchmark report online as soon as I presented it to the committee, but if you look at our per pupil budget comparisons against those same comparison communities, we are at the very bottom of the comparison group. Our per pupil expenditure for 2018, '19 was 15,473, that is very close to the state average, slightly under. We are below per pupil spending for both Rhythm and Plainville at this time. The only district that is below us in terms of per pupil spending is Berkeley. The next few pages go into the MCAS data and our district comparisons. Again, the principals just did a comprehensive presentation of our MCAS data, but you can see overall how we trend. We are strong performing in relation to those comparison districts in the science. We're close to the middle, our upper end of the pack in terms of that. Our data in the English language arts has been slightly increasing. We've talked about one of the challenges we had was that we did not participate like other districts did in the park testing, so many district students had many more years experience, or at least an additional two years, practice with online testing. We have increased our typing and keyboarding instruction throughout the grades and we're starting to see increases. And we also updated and revised our ELA instructional curriculum programs and that takes a couple of years before you generally see the, the benefits of those new programs. Math instruction, we're on the higher end of that comparison group. They, I think we're the, in fifth out of the 12th in terms of the number of students we have meeting and exceeding expectations in mathematics.
What did Anna Poizett do? I'm just looking for the.
They, yeah, we.
They're on fire now.
We do reach out when we do curriculum reviews, we look at high-performing districts, but we also look at high-growth districts.
Yeah, they are.
To see what people are putting in place. So they have seen significant gains in their mathematics program.
Just overall, I'm looking, I mean, if you look at their percentage.
Yep.
We go 62, 70, something, and then to 81?
Yep.
It's impressive.
So we, we should reach out and see what they've done recently, but that is part of the curriculum review process when we look at what neighboring districts are doing. We also provide you information on our district benchmarks. Again, we have in-house assessments that we use to evaluate student progress and performance. We have transition, we used to use the developmental reading assessment, we've, we've changed, we use the BAS to monitor students' progress, it's the benchmark assessment system in reading. It's the benchmark assessment system in reading. It's a bit more rigorous than the DRA. We saw an initial decline in the percentage of students overall meeting expectations, although what Anita put in, right in brackets, next to the number of students, percentage of students meeting is the percentage of students that were one point from the cutoff of meeting expectations. So, those are students that were really close but didn't quite make the grade level benchmarks. We have seen increases in most grade levels in the number, percentage of students that are meeting the benchmark with a couple of years into the program. There were a couple of areas we saw a slight decline, but again, we have to look at trend data because the population changes every year and the needs of the students change. So, we only have two years of assessment data with the BAS, so we'll have to look at that next year again as we start to be able to see patterns and trends emerge. We have data that follows again on the end-of-year writing benchmark. And again, we changed the assessment when we adopted the new curriculum in 2017-18, so we're still really establishing benchmark. We only have two years of data, but we have seen gains from '16 to '17 to '18-19. And then last, you have the percentage of students meeting the benchmark, the district benchmark in math. We have high percentages of students meeting the benchmark across all grade levels, all grade levels. Some fluctuation from year to year, but very strong performance overall. And then last, you see the other district data we collect is fact fluency, because we know that students that are proficient with math facts have greater success when it comes to problem-solving and critical thinking if they're automatic with their calculations and math facts. So, we collect data multiple times over the course of the year, and you can see in 2018-19 what our percentages look like of the number of students that demonstrate fact fluency, proficiency. We also are looking and piloting an additional tool for promoting fact fluency after the Freeman Kennedy this year, so we'll have some new data next year to see what the impact of that additional program would be. And that's the overview of the benchmark report. I'm happy to answer any questions, or if we want to bring this back and discuss it again at a different meeting, it's, you know, up to you.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
I think, and I don't know if you've dug this deep in, tying back to the budget proposal that we're discussing at 4.4%, do you know how our per pupil spending would be impacted by that? Would it remain static? Would it go down? Would it...
Well, all of the other, I've been at several regional meetings, everybody's early in their process, so I don't know what...
But just for us, like just our number.
Are we going to increase?
So, we've, like, so that's...
If we, so the last few years, we have typically averaged about 4 to 4.25%, so in terms of our comparison against ourselves and the number of additional students we have, it'd be pretty flat.
It would be, okay, that's my primary concern.
How we would compare to other communities, if we were to get less than 4%, if you're looking at three, we could, that could change how we look in terms of comparison, because I don't know what numbers other districts are looking at.
There's really only one more spot below us.
So, we'd be at the bottom.
Yeah, okay.
So, we'd be last, okay. Well, if we did a zero increase, we would...
We'd be really at the bottom.
Although Berkeley is still several thousand dollars below us, so I don't know that it would change our position in those comparison rankings.
Any other questions on the benchmark?
Well...
2018, right? 2018, no, just checking on...
All right, the next thing is per policy. Quarterly, I provide the committee with an update about incidents of bullying reported at each school. In the last quarter, there was one discipline issue, report regarding bullying reported at the H.L. Day. It was fully investigated according to our policy and practices. It did not meet the criteria to be considered bullying, so appropriate disciplinary measures were taken. At the Freeman Kennedy School this quarter, there were three issues or reports regarding bullying. Again, fully investigated according to our district policy, and two were found to meet the criteria for bullying in these situations. And again, appropriate actions were taken in accordance with our district policy. Questions on that? Nope. Okay. And then last for tonight for me is a draft of the school calendar. You have a copy in your packet. We've been working with Rentham and Plainville and King Philip as we do every year, because we try to coordinate some of our early release times so we can share professional development. None of the other three districts have approved their calendar yet for next year, so they all still have draft calendars out, will be the first. But we are recommending, based on a couple of things for next year, we're recommending a September 2nd start date for next school year. That is partially driven by the fact that September 1st, we're required to close because it's the state primary election. And then November 3rd, we also have to close because it's another, it's the presidential election. So, those two dates, September 1st and November 3rd, we are suggesting be professional development days, staff-only, we can relocate professional development to the H.L. Day so that we have sufficient parking, and we don't have that security risk that we have being open when there's a major election like that. So, the biggest difference to the calendar is we would be starting in September for the first year, for the first time in a couple of years. But it doesn't really make sense to open and then close on the September 1st date because of the election. So, we're suggesting the teachers start on the 31st of August, first day, the September 1st day would also be a professional development, students would start on the 2nd. All the other elementaries and KP have that in their proposed draft. So, this would also be the first time that we have the same start time as KP, which a lot of parents have been interested in. There's not other many major changes to the school calendar. It's very similar to what we had in place last year, other than those two changed dates for the elections. The tentative last day of school would be the 17th of June, with no days the 18th through the 24th. Other than that, there's nothing really that stands out as different, unless anyone has questions.
And you're going to work out the report cards with the teachers?
We did, we worked that out. This calendar has gone to the Teachers Association for feedback. We are closed, we would be closing the term again, first term, on the 13th of November, with report cards going home before vacation, so the teachers will have them out before the Thanksgiving break. Parent conferences will be a little earlier than they were last year, they'll be the first week of December rather than the eighth and tenth.
That's good.
Yep. Any questions? We are looking for a vote to approve the school calendar. And then attached behind is a draft of the school committee calendar, which has a suggested meeting date of the second Tuesday of every month. We can always vary that, that's a preliminary draft.
Second Tuesday of the month, we've never considered such a thing.
I think this has come up in the past, but any consideration for Jewish holidays at all? And I think there was some discussion of trying to align them with PD days in the past.
We have in some calendar years tried to look at that, but because we only have two full-day teacher PD days, and we have to close for the election, we have less flexibility about where we can schedule those. We have one additional day in January proposed, shared between the three districts, because we don't want to close for parents a day in September, October, and then November. So, and I believe most of the Jewish holidays this next coming year fall on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, if I'm correct. I'd have to look again, because we did look to make sure we didn't schedule conferences or anything on those days.
I know, that's been some feedback that's been shared and requested.
Yep. We did look, because we always make sure we're not scheduling conferences or meetings or important events on those days or PD, because our, we have a lot of staff members that take that as religious holidays. So, we try not to schedule PD, because then that's also a hardship for the staff members that want to take the day. But I believe most of them align with the, over the weekends, at least the fall ones.
And I'm going to assume the teachers don't set homework all those nights, right?
Sixteenth is a Wednesday.
The 16th is a Friday. I think it starts 16th sundown on Friday of October. Is that correct?
No, September 20th is a Wednesday. 16th...
21, I'm looking at 21.
Oh, then explain it then.
One job.
Yeah, Saturday, Sunday, New Year.
No, I can pause the 22.
Which is a Monday.
So, it's a Monday, so Sunday they'll start. And there was Friday to the 18th.
It's Friday to Friday, it's eight days, you can't plan around that.
Yeah, as long as you're not wrong.
Crazy days. Yeah, that's it.
Okay. All right, so do we have a motion to accept the 2021 school calendar?
So moved.
Here we go.
I'll second.
Jumping a little bit.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That's all.
No further change. All right, so going ahead to, do we have anything with King Philip?
King Philip?
Yes, sir.
Just so lengthy budget presentation, no, that was pretty much it.
They had their public hearing, right, already?
Yes.
Was that the public hearing on the budget that you had last?
That was the public hearing, yes.
Okay.
Do you remember what the actual percentage request they had at this point? I thought I'd heard it, and now I don't remember it.
Yeah, I don't have the number with me, but...
I know the assessment, because the assessment to towns are based on not just enrollment and some other factors. And the assessment to Rentham, they've spent their current proposal, it was like nine and a half.
Yeah.
So, they, they're struggling, because Rentham doesn't have that funding. Norfolk, actually, it's on the low side for next year, I think it's two and a half.
I think it was, but I think it still was 5.89 or something like that, it's significant.
Yep.
All right, move on to policy, where there's a multitude of first readings.
Yes, we have a number of first readings. And then also, we have some very minor changes that were given to us from MASC, from some previously recently adopted policies, one being the educational opportunities for military children and educational opportunities for children in foster care. Those have very minor changes, which are highlighted in the packet, I believe. But we do need to do a first reading for the first three. And the thing is that we discussed coming up with, we debated whether or not to come up with a policy on recording devices and social media, such as a lot of kids are wearing Apple watches now and cell phones and whatnot. But there's no policy from MASC right now, there's no, the other policies are, it's such a new issue that there's nothing really out there right now, so we thought to get ahead of it right now, because we are seeing some issues, to place it in the code of conduct and send out a connected message, letting people know that we've updated our code of conduct. And we also debated whether or not to ban those recording devices, Apple watches, iPhones, even the Vtech, you know, watches, and it's just too hard, you just can't, you can't monitor it for, so I think that's about it.
And basically, the two policies that are just incidental changes are the opportunities for military children in foster care. And basically, going through those policies, they simplified some of the languages, that was a little bit more confusing, and they updated based on changes to the regulations that were issued by the Department of Education. So, there are no substantive changes, it's really just cleaner, simpler language for those two. So, we could move those two forward for a vote next week, we didn't list it on the agenda as a vote, so those two could come forward for a vote next time, and the other three are new policies.
That makes sense. I assume we have nothing else on budget as we...
No.
Okay.
The next, the next meeting will be the public hearing.
Right.
That's all there really is to mention at this point.
All right, so then we just need a motion on the minutes from our January 14th meeting. A motion on that, to accept those minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept our minutes of the January 14th meeting.
Second?
Second.
Assuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We are slated for the 10th of March for our next meeting, does that work for everybody?
I would suggest with regards to that next meeting, the next meeting is our public hearing on the budget. And I would suggest if it's possible that we move that forward a week and do that the first week of March, because once we vote the budget, then we then have to go to the advisory board and select board to present our budget request, and we need time to be able to respond to any questions that they might have. So, KP, I know, has their meeting on March 2nd to vote their budget, they'll be prepared to go forward to the advisory board and selectmen after that time. And if we could do that week, or the first week of March, I'd recommend we look at the 3rd of March, because I have to be at the select board the 2nd of March to ask about the MSBA application. So, we don't want to conflict with that meeting. So, if it's possible, I'd suggest we do the public hearing Wednesday, March 3rd, with the school committee meeting immediately to follow.
All right, so can March 3rd work for people?
7:00 P.M.
Yes.
March 3rd is the Wednesday, correct? Do I have the right date?
March 3rd or is it Tuesday?
Okay, so it's the 4th, I'm sorry. The 3rd would be the Tuesday night is the night we have to go to the select board. I was counting leap year days, I was kidding.
So, March 4th, I can't do the 4th.
March 4th, okay. March 5th, Thursday possibly?
I can't do Thursdays.
I can do the 4th.
I can do the 4th.
I can do the 4th.
Because I'm flexible and easy to work with.
Thomas, can you do the 4th?
I can do the 4th. All right, I'm out.
Can you be with us in spirit?
Let's put a picture of you up, Jack Spirit.
I'm going to get a T-shirt. We could do, I mean, I don't know if people have a preference, but we could do Monday, the 1st, if the group prefers.
No, don't we have something on the 1st?
Monday, the 2nd.
Sorry, I don't have a calendar.
We have negotiations on the 2nd.
Oh, okay, all right, so we'd have to go with the 4th.
The 3rd's really the only open day for me there.
So, I could, yeah, I could do the 3rd or the 4th, so the 4th sounds...
I'm flexible, whatever is... The 3rd is the last meeting the select board will have where we can present the requests, so I have to be at that.
So, we have to do the 4th.
The 4th are optional, make it the 4th.
Four of us on the 4th.
All right, 4th, and then we'll have a picture of an 8x10 of Jeff sitting here.
I'll consider it, I'll try to make it.
5x7.
5x7, Jeff.
So, we would start the public hearing at 7:00, and then immediately following has a March school committee meeting.
So, we probably wouldn't meet for subcommittee for policy, right?
Probably not, correct.
Well, Jeff can't meet, well, yeah, we can delay till April, I think that's okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, and then...
So, the 4th.
So, now we just need a motion to adjourn for this evening.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn for this evening.
Okay, we have a second to adjourn for this evening.
I second the motion to adjourn for this evening.
Assuming no further discussion to adjourn for this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
And we are now adjourned.
Thank you.